There you go.
It is six thirty and I'm calling to order our Elgin City Council meeting, December the second, two thousand twenty-five, and we will begin with Councilmember Love, our wall call.
Love here.
Rodriguez here.
Cram here.
Brazier here.
McShan here.
Kaczynowski here.
Gibson here.
Swain here.
And I'd like to have a motion for to accept Councilmember Saint Pierre, who is out of town with the illness of family.
So.
And.
All second.
All right, then move to the second, and we'll begin with Councilmember Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, yes.
Cram, yes.
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Sorry, y'all can't hear me. Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay, sorry. Put it right up here. All right, we'll have our invocation.
Dear Lord, let us pause for a moment of reflection. We gather here as a council entrusted with the responsibility of guiding our community. May our hearts be open to peace, our minds attuned to unity, and our words shaped by understanding. Grant us the wisdom to listen deeply, the courage to speak kindly, and the strength to act with fairness. May our decisions tonight reflect not only the needs of today, but also the hopes of tomorrow. As we deliberate, let us remember that harmony is built when diverse voices join together, and progress is made when compassion leads the way. May this meeting be a space where respect prevails, where differences become opportunities for growth, and where our shared purpose shines brighter than any division. With gratitude for the chance to serve, we begin this work in the spirit of peace, unity, and understanding. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag? Honor on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Our first public hearing is for an ordinance annexing a one, one three three point six four seven oh acre and a forty point three six three acre tract of land totaling one seventy-four point zero one acres. The heretofore described territory to the city of Elgin, Bastrop, and Travis County, Texas, and extending the boundary of the said city so as to include said here into after described property within said city limits and granting to all the inhabitants of the said property all the rights and privileges of other citizens and binding said inhabitants by all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of said city. And adopting a service plan or agreement and granting permanent zoning of PDD Plan Development District, providing for a severability clause, and providing an effective date, providing for a savings clause, and repealing conflicting ordinances or resolutions. There's no one signed up, okay? It is six thirty-four and that public hearing is closed. The next one is public hearing on an ordinance granting a specific use permit for a short-term rental at two oh four Loesch Drive on a parcel of land known by Bastrop County Appraisal District as parcel, one five two, one, I'm sorry, one five seven two seven, Elgin Meadows Lot Thirty-One, City of Elgin, Texas, Bastrop County, Texas, and providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions. And there's no one signed up to speak to that one. It is six thirty-four and that public hearing is closed. Next, we have public comment. Speaker comments are limited to three minutes only. No formal action can be taken by the city council on items not posted on the agenda. Items requiring a public hearing will allow a member of the public an opportunity to speak during the public hearing and does not require a public comment form. We have several to speak, so let us please try and keep our three-minute limit so that we can get through all of them. The first one is Wes Calle.
Good evening. My name's Wes Calle, eighteen three oh four, Willis Age Lane. I'd like to say a couple of words, transparency, accountability, and trust. Those are all three things that us citizens, you know, look for in what's in front of us, the people at these desks. I'd like to speak again about my truck in September twenty-fourth of two thousand nineteen, where Chief there and his crew took my truck wrongly. I've spoke with several of you about it. A few of you in person, a few of you called out and reached, you know, asking questions. Majority of you haven't. I'm here once again to ask for a agenda item on this matter. You know, we shouldn't have to worry about the cops doing their job wrong and stealing stuff from the citizens, and we just lose it. It's not right in any way. Mayor, I'd like to speak on this thing. You know, I keep hearing that this is a personal matter, yet the police department's involved in all kind of stuff. I want to remind you that, you know, I do remember you as a citizen doing the homework to get a barricade and some signage in front of your home to change traffic. This is no different. You had a public problem, or you had a problem with the city and whatnot. I've got a problem with the city and the police department. All I'm asking for is what's right. You know, nobody has, even went forward to try and say, hey, man, we done you wrong. And the information that I've found, after years and years of trying to get it, shows that. We all know what part of that problem was. That problem's now gone. I'm trying to resolve this without taking this matter to court. It's my opinion and the opinion of attorneys and others that I definitely have a civil rights case. If we want to take it to that matter, I mean, that's up to you. I'm putting the ball in your court for the last time. All I'm asking for is to be heard, let's openly discuss it, and take care of the problem. That's all I'm asking. If not, I have to get my attorney involved, and that's something I'm trying not to do. I'm trying to save you the public embarrassment and the taxpayer money. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. The next one is Gina Gonzalez.
Hello, counsel. My name is Gina, is this supposed?
Might have to get closer.
My name is Gina Gonzalez. I would first like to bring attention to the information provided by Development in the last meeting resulting in the annexation of one eight seven zero six Lydic Road for industrial use adjacent to historic Freedman Colony Lydic. At the time of the annex meeting, the archaeology, archaeological survey was not submitted to the state for approval of the historic permit. After communication with Texas Historic Commission, it was expressed, and I quote, "Survey is required due to high probability for historic sites." I have with me artifacts from the proposed parcel, or whole, completely flipped. So to say that the land is not historic, I have evidence here proving that wrong. The proposed site is not one mile away from Lydic's historically marked cemetery. It is in fact point six three miles away from the historical marker. The site will be point eight miles away from Lydic's town center and point two three miles away from Indigo River Ranch Homes, far from the acres of farmland promised by Development in the P and Z hearing used to persuade actions moving forward. If things are being done in accordance with Texas regulation, I ask the city to please allow proper state approval of all permits, especially the historical permit due to the project's location and annexation of industrial use before taking steps forward. My community deserves proper notification from Elgin, especially if we have no voting rights in its county but pay taxes to said county. When receiving a thirty-day notice from T E Q C before the party building said wastewater treatment plant sends a notice, it's concerning and honestly feels underhanded. A minimum of three, of three-mile radius should be notified since that's how far the discharge route going over Lydic Road will extend at the start of the project, not when it's too late to speak out and change plans. This wastewater treatment plant will push Lydic to extinction, and it bothers me that my community, my historical heritage, was not considered in the planning. I will continue to fight for my great-grandfather's legacy. Thank you very much for your time.
Christopher, Christopher Scott.
Good afternoon, counsel. Yes, this is not on the agenda, but this pertains to the wastewater treatment facility as well located at the said address. My name is Christopher Scott. I'm son of the Lord Scott. Fourth, my fourth great-grandfather was Jackson Morrow. My fourth great-grandmother was Willie Morrow Houston, and my fifth great-grandfather was Samuel Governor Houston. History runs deep in Lydic community. This permit should be called Pollution, Gentification, and Profit: Removal of Historic Freedom Colony, Removal of Farmland, and Polluting Our Waterways. You plan to take a sewage, you plan to take sewage from miles away, pump it to this plant, process it, and dump six million gallons into our local creek and tributaries right next to us, like the last speaker spoke, less than a mile away from the Lydic community. Six million gallons you plan to process and dump into our local waterways. Walburg Creek is below that, below the wastewater treatment plant. I have a friend that has property down at, down by Walburg Creek. There's otters and beavers in that creek. When was the last time you heard about otters and beavers being around in Texas? That area where you plan to dump water is an animal sanctuary. This plant is within a hundred people. You plan to place this plant, you plan to place this plant where it will impact people minimal? We are all people. There is over a hundred families in that area that will be impacted health-wise by this plant. What happened to our farming community? What happened to the cattle? My hat says getting livestock. Elgin doesn't have no one no more. I wonder why? It has been pushed out due to gentrification and subdivisions and development. What happened to the farming community? What happened to the youth livestock? Do you have one anymore? No, we don't. It all has been pushed out due to gentrification and profit. There's much more I want to say, but motions are high. I really wish you would reconsider the location of this wastewater plant. And also, the way that it was done, it was disrespectful for the Lydic community, no notice, and disgraceful for some members of city council who knew about this and continue to push for this to go forward. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Alana Gonzalez?
Good evening, council members. My name is Alana Gonzalez. I'm a direct descendant of the Morrow family, one of the founding black families of Lydic, Texas. Tonight, I am not just here to share history. I am here to ask you to make a smart, fair, and responsible decision that protects this council, this city, and this community. Lydic was established by my ancestors, Jackson and Lucy Morrow, formerly enslaved landowners who helped create Texas's earliest black freedom colonies. Their son, Samuel, and his wife, who helped create the earliest, earliest freedom colony, Jenny, raised two daughters, Elizabeth M. Bright and Ruth O. Scott. Elizabeth raised two children, Quentin D. Bright and Thelma Bright Vaughn. Ruth married Atchinson Scott and raised a son, Hewland Scott. This is all very important. This is important because the property, eighteen seven zero six Lydic Road, is directly tied to that family line. Quentin Bright lived and died in the house that once stood on that tract of land. His mother also lived and farmed that tract of land until her death. She was ninety-seven years old. This isn't just a parcel on the map. It is a documented historic black homestead and one of the last physical links to the emancipation of freedom colony. Approving a wastewater treatment plant here would amount to erasure of that legacy. Council members, there are also practical concerns. This location has clear historical and cultural sensitivity, and moving forward risks unnecessary public controversy. It raises legitimate environmental justice concerns, placing industrial infrastructure on historic black land. It damages the trust between the city and longstanding residents and descendants. And importantly, alternative sites do exist. A wastewater plant can be put anywhere. Freedom colony, homesteads, they cannot be replaced. I am not here to oppose growth and progress. I am here to ensure that progress does not come at the expense of historic black land or this city's moral standing. Tonight, I am asking that you make the decision that is not only compassionate, but also prudent, responsible, and aligned with the best practices in planning and preservation. I respectfully ask for the de-annexation and the rejection of the industrial zoning requests to protect this council from decisive issue and honor a piece of history that belongs to all of us. Preserving this land is not a limitation. It is a leadership decision. Please choose fairness. Please choose preservation, and please choose the right side of history. Thank you, guys, very much.
I'm sorry, I may mispronounce your last name. Anne Brockenbro. I probably messed that up.
My name's Anne Brockenbro. I wanted to thank you all for listening to us tonight, letting us speak. I'm part of the, I'm one of the founders of the Willbarger Creek Conservation Alliance, and it's part of our mission to preserve the rural landscape and the cultural heritage of the Lydic community. We've been at this since two thousand eight, and we became formal in two thousand eleven. And we are here to support the members of the Lydic community in opposing the proposed wastewater treatment plant right next to the town, the historic town of Lydic. Lydic was one of the oldest freedom colonies in Texas founded by Jackson Morrow, a former enslaved person who donated the land for the town in eighteen eighty-three. Jackson Morrow's son Edward went on to become the first black postmaster in Texas in eighteen ninety and served in that position until nineteen forty. In the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen, in the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds, Lydic had its own school district with four schools, a post office, a general mercantile, a church, and a cemetery. a post office, a general mercantile, a church, and a cemetery. When I came to this area in 1999, the church and the community center were still standing. The church was a white-clapered building, and it had a beautiful old bell tower, and I would drive by and admire how beautiful it was every day. I had no idea that one day I would drive by and it would be gone. It's one of my biggest regrets in life, that I couldn't do anything to save it because I didn't know it was going to disappear. I would have done something, I would have done anything to try to raise money to save that old, beautiful church. The same thing happened to the community center. One day I drove by and it was gone. And the same thing is happening again with this historic land. No one got any notice that this historic land was being sold to Elgin for a wastewater treatment plant, and so here we are to try and stop it. This land should be a park for the town of Lydick, dedicated to their ancestors. They deserve a monument, not a wastewater treatment plant. Willie Fowler Martin, one of the members of the Lydick community who served on our board, was responsible for getting the cemetery designated as a historic landmark. She said she did this so that the people of Lydick would have something of their very own. It's on our website if you want to look it up. There's a beautiful interview with Willie on our website, Willbarger Creek Conservation Alliance. And wouldn't it be nice if they had a park of their very own right next to the town with historic markers on that land that Jackson Morrow once owned instead of a wastewater treatment plant? I propose that the city of Elgin turn this 38 acres into a park and find another place for their wastewater treatment plant closer to the developments that it's servicing and further away from this historic town. There are other locations, as everyone else has said. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Elgin City Council. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I am here to support the members of Lydick community in opposing the proposed wastewater treatment plant located right next to the historic town of Lydick. I, too, work with Willbarger Creek Conservation Alliance, and we work to preserve our rural landscape, the communities that instill it, and the history. The historic town of Lydick is in the heart of this landscape and in the heart of what we do. Lydick is one of the oldest freed man colonies in the state of Texas. We recently gathered at the Lydick Cemetery for the annual Lydick Cemetery Cleanup organized by current Lydick Cemetery President Pam Fowler, who is here with us tonight. Pam's aunt, Willie, was one of our founding board members, and she played a large part in getting the cemetery designated as a historic landmark, as Ann just mentioned. In our last cleanup, Pam's brother Darrell was brought together a crew and fixed Jackson Morrow's headstone to put it back upright. As we all know, Jackson was the founder of Lydick and donated his own land to establish the town. Lydick deserves a park in his honor, not a wastewater treatment plant on his land. His history should be honored. Thank you very much.
Pam Fowler?
Good evening, Elgin City Council and everyone that's in attendance. My name is Kamala Fowler, and I am currently on the Willbarger Creek Conservation Alliance as a board member. I am also the current president for the Lydick Cemetery, which is a historical marker for the town or community of Lydick. My aunt Willie Mae Martin Fowler was responsible for getting that historical marker put in place. But a little bit before that, when that cemetery had overgrown, once the community was no longer there, a lot of the original families were either driven out because they lost their land to greed, and I will say that, just as I said it, greed. Their land was stolen from them. So a lot of the families who have children, like my dad, my grandfather, all who own land out there, lost their land for whatever reason and have moved away. We have preserved that cemetery through my father, my aunt, my grandparents, and everyone out there to make that a landmark cemetery that is beautiful. We run it with a committee group of us on donations is how we keep it clean and how we keep it preserved as well. So we are working, we are looking to see that that historical cemetery stays there. We don't want the wastewater treatment plant there. I am one of the only, one of probably about two farmers that are out there where these wastewater treatment plants are affecting our property, causing erosion, and many other things that are going on out there. My property and my land is personally affected by the one that Maynor is building. So the one that Elgin is building now, I am going to be caught right in the middle of all of that wastewater treatment facility that affects our animals. So with my genealogy and with my history, we are looking to try to keep our family on our land in our family for as long as we possibly can. So we are asking that you consider building a wastewater treatment plant somewhere else and not there. And with Jackson Morrow, my brother did, we uplifted headstones and everything that were literally being buried out there with his tractor to keep that preserved, and we want to continue doing that. Our annual Lydick Cemetery Cleanup is every year. We do it once a year, and we have 25 to 45 members to come out in the community to help us preserve that land. So we're asking you to please, please consider building a wastewater treatment facility somewhere else.
Good evening, council. I am coming to you all as a former program coordinator at the Sustainable Food Center and the current park stewardship program director with Travis County Parks Foundation and an ambassador of the Texas Freedom Colonies Project, but I'm also a farmer that lives here in Elgin, Texas. One thing that I have been very concerned about, as we have been talking about this wastewater facility, is the loss of farmland, specifically in Travis County and Bastrop County. Since 2017, Bastrop County has lost over 76,000 acres of farmland. In Travis County, we're losing about 16 acres of farmland every day. One thing that really concerns me is about the quality of life for the people of Lydick. It is clear that over time, there has been a concerted effort to wipe Lydick off the map. I'm very concerned for the quality of life that people will have there, considering how this wastewater facility will impact their environment, whether that be the smell, their water access, whether that will cause disease over time. And it is something that concerns me, just hearing the people of Lydick talk today about how there has been this concerted effort that's really impacting their quality of life. And as a resident of Elgin and as a farmer here, I don't think that's right. And so I just wanted to share that information with you all. Thank you.
Mo Ryan?
Hello, my name is Mo Ryan, representing 12324 Morrow Lane. I'm here to express concern for the proposed wastewater treatment facility at 1-8706 Lydick Road. The piece of property we represent is on the conservation easement in Lydick that houses the creeks and streams that the effluent from the facility will flow into. It was bought from a descendant of Jackson Morrow who donated his land to establish Lydick in 1883. I'm speaking on behalf of the farm business I run with my co-owners, who are present in the crowd tonight. Our farm is located on this property. We're a diversified vegetable farm implementing organic practices on three acres and have been operating for two years. Our main concerns with the proposed plant are environmental and social. Environmentally, the plant will be situated in an area prone to flooding and will discharge into the conservation easement, which is a protected and biodiverse area. We are aware that it is being built to the highest standard that the state requires, but those standards are aligned with conventional wastewater treatment facilities that all fail to consider the separation of emerging contaminants, persistent organic pollutants, and certain recalcitrant substances from wastewater. My colleague Corinne will touch on the social issues with this facility. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Corinne Ramirez, and I'm representing a farm located on the conservation easement protecting Willbarger Creek at 12324 Morrow Lane. I'm here to express concern for the proposed wastewater treatment plant at 18,706 Lydick Road. I'd like to echo the statements of everyone that has spoken before me, especially highlighting those of the descendants of Jackson Morrow and my colleague, Mo, as well as reiterate to the council all of the social, historical impacts that this wastewater treatment plant on this historic land will affect. The council has already been made aware of the fact that Lydick is one of the first freedom colonies of Texas, established by Jackson Morrow and his descendants. Lydick holds great historical significance, not only for Elgin but for Texas as a whole. Additionally, the people of Lydick will be most impacted bearing the brunt of the potential flooding, erosion, pollutants, environmental impact, and general disturbance of this facility, while not benefiting from the facility being that it is to service a different development. We hope that the council will honor the history of such an important piece of land that's not just a tract of land or a dot on the map, as expressed by the people prior, and consider the impacts of this land that has already been cultivated, protected, and cared for for generations and generations to come. Time and time again, we see the lasting impacts of environmental racism, and let this be a note of environmental racism on historic black communities in the United States and in Texas. And y'all, as a council, have a rare opportunity to prioritize a community's health, prosperity, and wellness for future generations over the greed of developers. I ask that y'all consider voting to de-annex the said tract and opposing future developments on this land, and open a public hearing to listen to descendants of Jackson Morrow and the general town of Lydick to ask them what they want and vision for this land to be. Thank you.
John Bell?
I'm with the Willbarger Creek Conservation Alliance. You have chosen to put a sewage treatment plant in absolutely the wrong place. You must not have known the cultural significance, because had you known, you probably would have never chosen this site. Fifty years ago, I bought what became 315 acres using a Texas Veterans Land loan. It has 3,300 linear feet of Dry Creek running through it. You're going to discharge your sewage just 50 yards north before it enters this property, which today has a conservation easement on it. I was not notified that you intended to run the sewage discharge right through this property. And this property is pristine land, Blackland Prairie. And Dry Creek is not a creek. Dry Creek is dry unless it's been a heavy rain. It runs for a few days or a few weeks, and then it's dry. It's a big ditch. My requirement with this conservation easement is to protect and preserve the historical and agricultural values of the Lydick area. And I would ask that y'all would join us in this attempt to do that. The developer, there is technology that would enable that developer to contain his sewage. They can treat sewage to high standards. It's not going to be treated to the highest standard anywhere close to what they are capable of doing. And let them treat it and reuse it up there. It can be used again. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, did you sign up twice? Did you sign up twice?
Somebody may have signed up, but we were stuck in traffic.
Oh, okay, okay. Because it has two different addresses, I just didn't want to miss anybody.
Correct.
Okay.
The farm is right there.
Okay. Betty? And I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. Lucky? Am I even close?
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
I am.
The address. Yeah, 18405 Albert.
Okay. I'm sorry, can you turn around and face and put into the mic?
It's a little blind.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a little blind.
Okay, there you go.
My name is Larry Mayo. I'm not a spokesman. I live in the area, but I feel from my heart that I have something to say about this because it hit me because I just found out that this was going on, and they're going to try to build a wastewater out there in that location, seeing to be one of the worst locations in the world. I go to church out there, I got family out there, I have a home out there, I have property out there. I think trying to do something of that nature would break down the quality of the property that they have. And most of all, right off the county line road, we've been having a wastewater problem over there for over 50 years, over 50 years. Nobody did nothing about it. Sure, stink, stink. If they did nothing about that, what are they going to do about a wastewater plant? Where just diseases just going around and everything? We still got COVID. We still got other disease, and it's going to be sprayed if you put it in the neighborhoods. We got neighborhoods that just five miles away, two miles away, one miles away. Then they're planning on building a new neighborhood right close to the plant? Lit it, and all that combined together is one. I go to church out there. I even help clean the cemetery out there. I'm part of that neighborhood. And from the bottom of my heart, I hope they don't build anything out there of that nature. Why there when there's so much other... Why there when there's so much other lanes around here? I think we had a problem like that before. I'm sorry, I'm not a spokesman. I'm just speaking how I feel from my heart. And I'm just saying if I had anything to say, if I had a chance to do anything about it, I would stop it. I would stop it because I think that's very dangerous to put that in the neighborhood. Why not put it out away from the neighborhood? Because we just built a school out, an elementary school out in that location. Anything five or six, seven, 10 miles away is going to be affected. Why there? I can't understand that. And I'm so proud that y'all let me come up and say what I like to say, but I'll make it clear, I'm not a spokesman. I'm just a person that live in that neighborhood, and I pray, I pray to take that the Lord stop that project. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's all of the public comments that we have noted. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Betty?
My name is Betty Mayo. My father, John Armstrong, was a resident of Lydick. His father, Jesse Armstrong, was a resident of Lydick. We have, our, we live in 18405 Albert Volker. We originally lived in 18400 Albert Volker. I've been living there practically all my life. I, I'm originally from Chicago. A lot of people know me. I know Teresa, and I know Liston. I know all of you. I, I, I was hurt, really, to find that you're going to put a septic tank out there without our knowledge, and it tears me apart. I, I just want to say that my father went to school out there. He died when he was 94. His father purchased that property, and it, and I am, I plan on having my children be a part of that property. I don't want them to be subjected to disease and, and, and all kinds of things that this wastewater plant will entail. And I am asking you, please, to, if you can put it somewhere else, please do, because I'm not a speaker, but this, this is important. It's been in my family for over 100 years, and I, I knew nothing of it until now. And I am asking you all to listen to the, to these people here and, 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 and understand that this is very, very, very important to us. We, this is, I mean, this is our homes. These are our homes. And we, we have, this is our homes. I mean, this is our homes. And that's, that's really what, all I have to say. I wasn't prepared to say anything, but I just had to because it's just so deep, so deep. I had no idea how deep it was until I heard this. And I just, that's all I have to say, but I, I, I implore you to really consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Go on to our announcements.
I am going to let y'all know that this weekend is Friday, it's not on our list, but I just wanted to mention it, is the Elementary School Concert in Veterans Park. That's something we do every year, so Friday at 6:00. Then that follows with Holiday by the Track Saturday. We have events from 10:00 to 4:00. The Hot Cocoa Stroll will be from 2:00 to 4:00 with the chamber, so look for that. They're also going to have a market. Then we have Merry Minecraft Christmas, also Saturday at the library. Winter Wonderland with photos with Santa on the 13th at the Elgin Parks and Rec Center. And then do not forget Elf on the Shelf, which is our downtown scavenger hunt from the 11th through the 14th.
We'll move on to our City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to start off with a notification of our Elgin Recreation Center, which was awarded a National Recreation and Park Association's Supporting Healthy Aging Through Parks and Recreation 5.0 Instructor Training Grant. Ms. Elizabeth, where are we at? There you go. Ms. Elizabeth Marzick, please.
Good evening, Council. We are really excited to announce we are receiving the NRPA Shaper Grant again. We received this in 2023, which is how we implemented our Active Living Every Day 12-week free program that we've been offering consistently for the last two years. This is the second time we're being awarded the grant, and this time for Fit and Strong. So this is a program for individuals suffering from arthritis to help them get up, active, and mobile. It'll be a free program hosted by NRPA through our staff. They're paying to train.
Yay!
In your packet, you should have or do have your Board of Adjustments Quarterly Report. If you have any questions, please. Your Building Standards Commission Quarterly Report as well. Your Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Quarterly Report. And Ms. Marzick, if we can go ahead and bring you up for Special Events Permitting Process, if you could, please.
All right. So in your packet, you have a proposal from the Parks Advisory Board. Just for reference, I've got my notes there, but you have a memo copied on the screen for the audience. But in 2025, City Council waived an estimated $12,200 in public works staff time and an estimated $15,300 in police department staff time, which is fairly significant. And up until now, we don't have a process for those special events. You can contact any member of staff, and some process will happen to get you in front of council. So I worked with the Community Services Department, Police Department, Public Works Department, and City Secretary, as well as the Parks Advisory Board, to create the process in front of you. This hopefully streamlines the process, makes it consistent and clear for both patrons and staff, how you're going to request a special event, how you're going to request a fee waiver, and how it's going to get in front of City Council with consistent information
So is, are you, are you guys officially adopting this? Because I know there's no action needed, so I guess my question is, what, what comes after tonight?
So this is being put in front of this council as, as a proposal, so that you can look at this and see if it's workable for us. We think it's, it's pretty fine-tuned and ready to go, but we also understand that it needs to work for, for this council as well. So what I would suggest is if you can take a look at the proposal, take it with you, and see how it would operate, and if we can come back perhaps on the 16th or the first meeting in January to go ahead and see if we can go ahead and finalize this. But I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with the process, because we don't want to put something before you that's, doesn't really work for us, but we think, especially through Elizabeth's leadership and putting this together with, with the rest of staff, we think it's, it's doable. But we don't want to make that assumption with, with our council. So today was just out to have you take a look at it and see what you think, and come back at it.
I appreciate the work put forward, and I do think we need a process, because I think it's, from what I've heard, it's pretty spaghetti-like. And I also think we need to consider the amount of fees that we are waiving, and is that, if anybody applies, do they get their fee waived, or are there certain requirements? So I, I personally appreciate that.
Good. So Mayor, if, I know it's not on the agenda, but if, can we recognize that this is Ms. Marzick's last meeting with us? And so we just want to say thank you. And so, I don't know how you want to take that, but I, I've been here briefly, but I appreciate it definitely what, what she's done in the brief period I've been here.
So, yeah, I kind of forgot that this is your last meeting. I thought you were going to come back for one more.
We can bring him back.
But no, we want to thank you for all the work that you've done. You've done quite a bit through the time that you've been here, always been responsive, always got things done, and that's, that's very important to us. We congratulate you on your next step, and hopefully everything goes well for you, and you can always come back home.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Bravo, bravo.
Madam Mayor, can we say that we'll go back over this on the 16th to make some sort of recommendation back to staff? Or I don't want to just leave it up in the air.
Oh, well, when you say...
He said the 16th or the...
First.
Can we just say?
You told, you told us when?
We'll put it back on the 16th.
16. Time's short.
Yeah, that's what else.
Thank you.
You can assign homework, I can. Thank you.
Yeah. We just assigned homework.
Oh, thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. In your packet as well, special, well, we got the permitting process, Main Street Board Quarterly Report is in your packet as well. And then item number seven, Mayor, I would ask that we table that item. We're, we're not ready for primetime on that one yet.
Okay. We are tabling number seven.
Thank you.
And then we go ahead then with our consent agenda. Get this up here, I have to get used to it. All right. So on our consent agenda, we have the, the blast council meeting minutes on November the 5th, special event application, alcohol ordinance waiver for the, which one's coming up here from 10:00 to 8:00 for our key elevation luxury cuts, their first year anniversary. And then we have a resolution for ratifying payment authorization pay application for grant works for the milestone two of the D270 Kennedy Street project we've been working on. And there's a resolution for approving updated city pay scales reflecting the 4% cost for COLA living adjustment.
Mayor, I'm sorry if I can interject real quick. So we've substituted the pay scale for the police department. You should have the new copy on your desk before you, and so I want to make sure that the council's aware that the corrected copy is on your desk before you take any action on that. Is that correct?
Yes. So this takes into account both the COLA and their fee schedule? I said, so this new corrected one is the COLA plus their fee schedule?
Their step.
It includes their steps, and it does account for the COLA.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if anybody doesn't want to pull anything, I'll make a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second. It's been moved in second, and we'll begin with Mayor Pro Tem, Brazier.
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kaznowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Krim, yes.
All right. And we'll move on to do business. The first one is an ordinance setting the time and place of the 2026 regular monthly meetings for the City Council of the City of Elgin. And I believe that is on your desk as well. The question was, is Tuesday, November the 3rd election day?
Yes.
So we can have him for the day?
It's up to you.
We can move it if you want.
We, we typically move it down to the next one. That would be the 10th.
So we moved, I moved it away from the 10th because that's TML.
So we'll have it on the 17th?
So we'll do like we did this year.
We can do it on the 17th.
Okay.
So when we make the motion, can we motion to change that one? But if everybody's good with the other ones?
Any other comments on this?
I just want to call attention to the October 13th date, that there's a holiday right before that, so just in terms of the agenda that you posted.
It just means I posted a day earlier.
Not do, I entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposed meeting dates with the exception of November, moving it to the 17th.
Okay. I'll second.
It's been moved in second, and we'll begin with Deputy Mayor, I mean, with Mayor Pro Tem.
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kaznowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Krim, yes.
And the second one is discussion and possible action regarding the reappointment of Roger Adams to the Bastrop County Advisory Board of Health. He's been our representative on this board for the past year, and this is just reappointing him to that, unless somebody else wants to jump in and start going to those meetings.
Does he go to the meetings?
He goes to the meetings, and he, he gives updates. He'll be at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. We'll begin with Councilmember Kaznowski.
Kaznowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Krim, yes.
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes. And the third one is the discussion and possible direction to staff regarding the distribution of community nonprofit support funding. We had a committee that worked on it, and we'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Yalicia Love, so that she can tell us all about the progress and the decisions that were made.
Everybody have their paper? Okay, great. So as you see, it was myself, Councilmember Gibson, and Councilmember Saint Pierre. We did our own spreadsheet as usual, and then we went through and calculated each number. Obviously, we gave food the highest priority, and then broke it down from there. Is there any questions?
I motion we accept it.
Second.
It's been moved in second. We'll begin with Councilmember Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, yes.
Krim, yes.
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kaznowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Thank you for doing that. It's no easy task. We've, several of us have been through it.
All right. Number four, discuss and adopt general... All right. Number four, discuss and adopt general use policies for the Elgin Public Library.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Okay, so before you, you should have our updated, well, it shows the revisions on there. So the policy that you are reviewing today is Elgin Public Library's application and use policies. These policies refer to the general use of the library and cardholder expectations and guidelines. And just so you know, it is essential for EPL to periodically revise and update policies to address community equity, to ensure a safe and welcoming environment, and fulfill the requirements for accreditation by the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. These essential guidelines govern the use of library resources and services in equitable and productive environment for all users. The policies were updated through a collaborative effort involving both staff and the library advisory board. The changes that were made are primarily to update the language in the policy. The only substantial change was modifying the renewal limits. And just to kind of explain, we had lowered the renewal limits from ten renewals to two renewals. And this change will increase access for all patrons to library material. The only time an automatic renewal will not happen is when a book has been placed on reserve by another patron. So do you happen to have any questions?
Um, yes. So a few of these that are listed on here, i.e. the clothing is required to cover upper and lower torso. Shoes are required, obviously, in the library, just anywhere. Clothing should not have offensive images or messages. Clothing should be clean and free of offensive odors and substances that could be transferred to library furnishing or equipment. This is open to a lot of different interpretation and it obviously leaves us open to discrimination. And so with that type of language in here, especially for this particular area, I understand it was given to the advisory board. When something like this is given, it should probably also go to the attorney or legal.
Okay.
Just because then we are now discriminating maybe against a particular culture because you're saying that the torso has to be covered. There's cultures even here in Elgin that wear crop tops in a fashionable way, in an appropriate way. And then we're saying that if you have an offensive odor, I mean, who is the one that's policy, that's policing this policy and making that decision that, oh, you have an offensive odor? So that is, that, this particular part raised a lot of concern for me.
Okay. I'm happy to, you know, if we need to, as you suggested, you know, run it through the city attorney, happy to do that. Is there anything else?
I hadn't caught that, but given my background, my profession, I agree with what you're saying. I think that that needs to be looked at.
Anybody else have any other comments?
I wondered what was offensive because I think there's probably things that I see are offensive who are not offensive to others.
Sure.
We do that, we're taking away the library being a public safe space. It takes away being a safe event.
Yes, ma'am.
One where... Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else on there that catches your attention?
I just want to say I appreciate the free, or the automatic renewals because it helps me out a lot. It's all the good.
Sure. So is that change that we made, because that was probably one of the biggest changes we actually made? How does, how do you feel about that?
Oh, wait.
Is it not going to be automatic?
It will be automatic renewals. We just lowered the renewal times from ten to two renewals. Right. So basically...
Make sure you have your mic close. They're not able to hear unless it's right here on the...
So basically, if a person has checked out a book and nobody puts a reserve on it, they can have that book up to a month and a half where prior it was like five or six months, I'm not quite sure. But it was quite a long time.
That, that works as long as it's not two weeks.
No.
Can I ask, why does the parent have to have a card to, for a child to have a card?
Reason being is because we can't hold a minor accountable, you know, if items are not turned in. So that way the parent is being held accountable for materials lost or late fines, that sort of thing.
How was that processed before?
It's, it's the same. We just basically updated a lot of the verbiage to make it more clear, hopefully.
Any more questions or comments?
I'm good with it as long as we can make that one section less subjective.
Okay.
I would request for them to take this whole thing back.
Okay.
And before we make any yays or nays, just until that is because, yeah.
So we'll have the city attorney address and look at those things and work on the verbiage and then bring it back to us.
Okay. All right. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one's number five, discussion and possible action to select an agreement with the Elgin Chamber of Commerce for the funding for Operation of Visitor Center.
Thank you, Mayor. As we discussed at a previous meeting, I did meet with our city secretary with the Elgin Chamber of Commerce and we had some discussions about the upcoming year's contract. What I provided you in your packet is two different agreements. The first is a modified agreement and then right after that is the one that is currently being used. And so in other words, you know, the one that if you were to do, make no changes, it would be the one that's in the second half of your packet, right, under what we're looking at. The first part of it, though, is where we sat down across the table and had some discussion with the Chamber of Commerce. And we had quite a bit of discussion on quite a few things. And one of the, you know, driving issues, obviously from the Chamber of Commerce standpoint, and we do have representatives here. So at the discretion of the mayor and the council, you know, however you want to handle those questions with them. But at least from the standpoint where it was discussed with me, obviously, the funding source was crucial to them and the dollar amounts coming to them to fund what they need to fund was one key point. One thing that I did discuss pretty intensely was that the monies that we're providing to the Chamber of Commerce should, and it's coming out of hotel motel tax, the hotel occupancy tax, should fund heads and beds. And it's actually a two-step process, but it's generally just easily thought of as you need to be put in heads and beds. And so when you think about it that way, it really should be thought of through the lens of the visitor center. And I know it's explicitly written that way. And while the Chamber of Commerce has historically done some of that, I think the core function of those dollars require them to be that, right? So there could be a lot of stuff going on with the Chamber of Commerce with what they need to be doing as a chamber, and that's great. But for the hotel occupancy dollars, they need to be spent on hotel occupancy tax stuff. And so while ribbon cutting is great and everything else, the focus was that we need to be promoting individuals to come, visit, spend money, stay in our hotels, spend that, get taxed, that hotel tax, to generate more tax money, to spend more money, to get more visitors, and we keep going on and on and on, right? And that was understood very clearly. The other thing I mentioned, and again, I'm, you're soon, you're already noticing, right? I'm upfront and I get to the point. The site, it's, it was, it's a little difficult to see the site as a visitor center or a Chamber of Commerce. And I explained that. And I'm seeing this through my lens. I don't speak for the city council. But at least the vantage point, as you authorized me to do, is that it's, it was, you know, walking by, I didn't see quite clearly that was what it was. And so I think there's some opportunity there and I think the chamber did agree that, yeah, there's an opportunity to showcase, if nothing else, to bring that visitor center portion come to light. Because again, the driving force, and I'll keep repeating this, is to have visitors come from out of town, look for the visitor center and say, where can I go eat? Where can I go spend my money? Where can I stay at a hotel? They need to find that instantly, you know, they need to know it's, you know, easily located, that sort of thing. So that was the driving idea behind it. There's some things in here that are changed. I didn't want to talk about and discuss, not at my level, the dollar amount, right? I wanted to leave that as a council decision. What I wanted to talk was the operational side of it. And what I wanted to discuss and put in here was that some of the mechanics needed to be in there to make sure that that operation could be focused on that visitor center component. And one thing that I'll say as well is that there are some issues in here that, with that having been said, I'll give you an example. So hours worked, right? So we had it already in there with the current agreement that there were certain hours that needed to be open. And so some of our hours had been agreed to and events that needed to be worked by Chamber of Commerce individuals. That's great. And I think they're doing a bang-up job in doing that for us. But on a weekday basis, you don't get a lot of, not at this point right now, a lot of visitors, you know, at ten o'clock a.m. on a Tuesday, right? And so what I'm trying to get everybody to realize, put yourself in the visitor's spot. And when the visitors, when you go visit somewhere, what days are those? It's going to be a Friday night, a Saturday afternoon, Saturday morning. And so if there's a total number of hours that you're actually able to work because you have certain staff members that you have, well, then you flex the times to reflect your heavy hours are going to be on a Saturday. Like when you have those people that are here, it's, you want to be tending to them. And so again, trying to be focused on those ideas and less about the operational side and the office needs, it was more like for the hotel occupancy tax dollars, follow those guidelines. Our city attorney did embed also some needed things in there, like making us a co-insure the city, which is an obvious thing that should be done, should be at no cost. You just make sure that we're named. So I think there's some key components and key pieces in there. Some reporting requirements, we are, I think, very clear as to what we expect on reports. There's a question about audits, nine ninety forms. And the way I said it was, we're not in charge of the organization's financial documents. But I will say that if there are qualified 501(c)(6), whatever's required by IRS for 501(c)(6) is what we would expect them to have. And if it's every two years that it must be done, if a nine ninety is required, then that would be the requirement that we would expect. Mind you, when we finished having the conversation, then I did send this over to Mr. Schroeder. He looked it over, tweaked a couple of different things, and we passed it back to the Chamber of Commerce. And I think generally speaking, we're hovering over general agreement as to what we can work with, at least in the terms that we're talking now. Anything outside of that, it really is going to be here at the desk with you all. My focus is more first principle, let's get visitor center focused with using hot dollars. Because whoever receives those dollars needs to be following that law. Because the last thing you need is, you know, not expensing out with qualified hotel occupancy dollars. It's very simple. I think it's being done and, but we need to memorialize that and it needs to be an everyday thing where we can expect it to say, not only is it the Elgin Chamber of Commerce, but it's the Elgin Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center that we do have. It's quite simply just that fact. But that's as far as I could take it, like I said. So I think there's some good pieces in here. We gave a little on certain things. There's some pieces in there, like some needed marketing material, like pieces of material, you know, like four or five thousand pieces that need to be done. And some accessory reporting that we thought didn't get us to a point that made us any better. And so we didn't think that that got us anywhere. So even four thousand piece, you know, postcards or rack cards, two thousand would be fine if we laid off that a little. But even having done that, then the expectation would be then, where can we see you pushing in a little on your side to make it more user-friendly for the visitor? And so that's, that's kind of where we're at at this point. We were hoping that this council would kind of take a look at this and that on the sixteenth, we would come back with that final agreement. And so that the Chamber of Commerce also would have a, an opportunity to kind of look over whatever the final version is and sign. So that way on January one, they're walking away already knowing the council's secure us and knowing what's going to happen, at what funding level, and what metrics that we would expect to follow. And that's the other thing too, is that I'm kind of anal on those metrics and that kind of reporting. And so I'm going to be in everyone's business because now it's my business. And so if I'm on the hook for it, and I hope to be on the hook for it, then I'm going to be in your business. And so, but I think we're good. We're in a good place. We've got a good partner with us. We just got to get it straight. And so as we're fixing all our stuff, but we got good partners downtown too. I mean, museums coming online and a lot of other places too. But Chamber of Commerce and this hotel occupancy tax agreement is a key one. I did put in there, and you do see in there, that it's a two-year agreement. Now, that is in there though, but it still remains as an annual agreement that you see every year. And the provision remains the same with a thirty-day out from any party. And so that doesn't change. What we're trying to do is give the chamber a little bit of comfort to know that we are reaching out with an all of wrench. But also that means, but by taking this, there are some things that we would expect. And make me the bad guy if you want. And I'm okay with doing that because I've been in their seats too. So I've been grilled by cities. I've been grilled by private sector, public sector. I get it. But that's where we're at at this point, Mayor. So those are the major pieces in there. There's, you know, an hour change here, an hour change there, but those are the core components. But you do still see in there, the fifty-eight thousand annual is still in there. And so that, that's the main driving force behind it and I can't speak for them. But I will say when it was conveyed to me, that was one of the core components, a driving factor, at least that they were asking for, is to remain funded at those levels. I'll leave it at that for now.
So we've got the president and Ron is here. Do y'all have anything you want to add and tell us if we're going to do our homework and look over this document? Do y'all have anything you want to?
Yeah, anything I'm missing?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is Heather Blum, our president of Elgin Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. I just, I wanted to make a point that in our discussions with the city manager and the city secretary, the chamber and visitor center took very seriously the points being made by the, by the city manager. Currently, on our sign, on our building, it says Elgin Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. We also, on our Facebook page, it says Elgin Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. On our website, I believe it was changed, right? Elgin Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. We have a sandwich board just placed out front every morning, says Elgin Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. But where, where we have room for improvement is, it's small writing. And when the executive board and the president get together, we're looking at making visitor center much more prominent than what it is. It's there already, but we just, it just would be served purposes, I believe, of both sides to make it a prominent part of our, of our name. We're also making sure that we're going to include it in our literature and our brochures and our rack cards, et cetera, et cetera. We take very seriously the, what happened last year with our reporting. It was new reporting and we made some errors and some changes have been made. It was new reporting, and we made some errors and some changes have been made with what the city is proposing. And I think as the chamber and Heather, please jump in if you agree, but I think that we understand.
Yes. I will say that in our discussions, in our discussions, that the reporting, the expectations have been more clear. And we will work to make sure that we get those accurate numbers and get all the information for that reporting and in due time.
I just want to close with, unless you have questions, I want to close with, you guys, we appreciate and understand what hot funds are. We know how to spend them correctly. And we appreciate, and it's so valuable, the hot funds that are presented to the Elgin Chamber and Visitor Center. Because without those hot funds, we're in a situation that we don't really want to discuss. I feel like we're gonna do our part. We know what you guys want from us, and we're gonna do our part. And I hope that in reflection, when you look at the changes that were proposed, maybe you see where we're coming from and where the city, because we see where the city is coming from, and we can come to an agreement. Heather, would you want to close?
I just want to say thank you so much, and we appreciate the opportunity to be partners. And we are making the steps to improve those expectations and making sure that we serve as Elgin's visitor center while also supporting our local businesses as well. Thank you.
Do you have questions?
I have questions and comments, but I don't know that they're... One question I have is for Peyton. Have we received all of the reporting from this year? I know I have through, I have January through July, because I did some, as our interim city manager said, some anal data crunching earlier. So I'm wondering, do we have everything through the end of the year?
Yes, the only thing we're missing is the form 990.
You can grab the mic. I think it's hot. The mic's hot. Yeah, I think so.
Okay. The only thing we're missing is the Form 990, Heather, unless you've sent that to me and I missed it?
Yes, I did email that to you. Please let me know. I'd be happy to send it again.
Can you share the rest of the reports?
Yep.
I guess what I'm getting at is I think it's important for council to see what the reporting metrics were and what was reported. And you guys aren't beating around the bush, but I looked at the numbers and I think for six months, the data that was reported was maybe around, I want to say 250 visitors. The vast majority were Bastrop County. When we're looking at out of town, or heads in beds, as we like to say, negligible. That's concerning to me, because if I said $58,000 divided by 15 people, that's a lot of money per person per head, if you want to look at it like that. So anyways, I just, I think there's been an expectation that this money goes to the chamber from the city. And me personally, I need to see some results for me to feel confident. Because right now, looking at the numbers, I don't feel confident giving $58,000 for that kind of output. So anyways, I guess I would encourage everybody to look at the metrics, so you really know this is what we're paying, is this what we're expecting. I feel like I was gonna say, I was gonna bring up some of those numbers, but I think the other, the only quick thing I'll say real quick here is, I agree with you that the hours need a change, and I don't think nine to 12 on a Saturday is sufficient. Because again, most people, if they're visiting Elgin from out of town, they're here all day Saturday, they're here in the afternoon. And so, I really think, you know, if it were me, if it were just Joy, I would say, you know, the visitor center is open, like, I don't know, Tuesday, maybe even like Tuesday through Sunday, you have, you know, maybe there needs to be some sort of survey, when do visitors come? I mean, you've got maybe church or religious services on Sunday morning, but are people coming here in the afternoon? You know, I see lots of businesses that are open in the afternoon, so I think that needs to be...
Save the morning hours, yeah.
And then absolutely, I agree with the signage and the just having a visitor center. It doesn't, to be perfectly honest, it doesn't feel like we have a visitor center.
Well, we'll do, Councilmember, for me, Mayor, we'll send that reporting to the entirety of the council tomorrow morning, so that way you can have that, so as you're going through this. And then I'll send you back some, or as you've heard, possibly we can redo some of the hours to reflect a fuller Saturday. And with your suggestions also on that, to see how that could work out. Instead of us, or me, trying to dictate what that looks like, maybe you can jump in between. We've got a couple of days, a couple, you know, and agendas are kind of due to the 16th, so I'll work with you on that though. Is that fair?
And then, is there a way, piggybacking off of Joy, that we could look at some of the reporting that Kaylee has, showing the influx of people in and out? And see if that will help us with some times, maybe?
Yeah, she's got some good information too. Yeah. Okay. We'll do that as well.
Anything else, Council?
Welcome, Heather.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, number five. Oh, we just did that, sorry. Number six. Resolution of the city authorizing the city of Elgin to enter into a cost participation agreement for upsizing the water and wastewater lines and Northside Meadows development.
Evening. The Northside Meadows development is underway. They're permitted and they're starting to break ground. What this does is the required lines that they're required to put into their subdivision, this is just upsizing it. This is the only time to really do that, to put it in a fraction of the cost of what it would take to do it later. So this creates a loop in our system from FM 1100 down to the southern end of our CCN. Creates redundancy and improves the water service throughout the entire system.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. We'll begin with Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Love.
Love, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Krim, yes.
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Celine, yes.
Okay. Number seven, ordinance granting a specific use permit on a short-term rental at 204 Losch Drive. That's the one we just had the public hearing on.
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion or questions about that?
I don't know if they're here, but I appreciate them being here and submitting.
Being honest with it.
Being honest, being a part of it.
Yeah. I said that when I first saw this too. It was like...
Well, that was my question, and they're good with the fees and the taxes and all the cool stuff.
And let's be good, you know? Let's do something good with those hot funds.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and we'll begin with Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Love.
Love, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Krim, yes.
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Celine, yes.
All right. Number eight, discussion impossible action to authorize the interim city manager to negotiate a contract for comprehensive compensation and benefits. Ooh, Lord, benefit study.
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna have Ms. Pamela Sanders, HR Director.
Hello again.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, we started talking about a compensation study probably eight months ago. We have finally narrowed it down to one, one firm to use. Sorry, I'm tired. We had 14 firms respond to our RFQ. The reasons that we wanted to do this was the market competitiveness, address compression issues, that's been the biggest thing that we have. And you see the pay scales you adopted earlier. You can see compression, how much it exists between each of the levels. It also helps with recruitment and retention. The firm that we selected is 100% woman-owned firm. It is Logic Compensation Group out of Austin. They have multiple offices, but one in Texas, and it is in Austin. So their local, the consultant that would be assigned to us would be able to be onsite and visit. They have 125 years of experience. I'm not gonna read this entire slide, because you have the 65-page document in front of you. We did check references with all of them. On page 10 of the document that's attached to the agenda, you can see the different cities that they did and the ones in Texas. I spoke personally with City of Taylor, City of Lake Jackson, and City of Belton, and all of them gave rating reviews, some of the best that I've ever heard, and all of those cities have used Logic Comp more than once. So for them to go back to the same firm says a lot as well. And I do have those in writing, if you need to see those. Again, the project scope, this is a mirror of what our RFQ asked for. The firm was able to hit on every piece of it. They gave us a solid timeline of what it's gonna look like and how that breaks down and which part the city works on, which part the firm works on. This will require involvement from all levels of staff, not just the HR department or the city manager's office. All levels, department heads to line staff will be involved in this process, which helps with buy-in when it comes back to you all. Again, the benefits. Some of the things that we talked about when in the RFQ was establishing career ladders. So for example, like our wastewater plant, with each level of certification that they require, we wanted them to make sure that part was included and to give us some ideas on how to do a three-year implementation. Your action tonight is to allow the city manager to begin negotiating a contract with Logic Compensation Group. And then we'll come back next council meeting with that contract, if authorized, to ask you to approve that contract. Questions? Did y'all have a chance to review that document? We looked at 14 of them.
So I do have to say, so first of all, thank you. And we did have a cross-section team that helped us. And the thing was, is that as we're scoring each one of these 14 individually, then math was done blindly, because these were numbered, they were not done by name. They were averaged, they were put on a score sheet. And so, it then came down to the top five, and it got trimmed down to the top three. And then, the top three got reference-checked. And then, reference-checked landed with the one over, I think the weekend, we're having conversations as a group. And the group themselves were the ones who drove home the conversation, say that they felt good on that last one with, which is Logic. Which I felt comfortable with the top three, to be honest, and I feel real comfortable with this one. And I'm just glad that the team circled around the same general idea out of having a, just no pressure on anybody and no one having the conversations to sit there and saying, I like that one, I like, but it was nothing. It was like picking championship beans. You weren't able to talk about beans. It's kind of the same way.
It was.
Just saying.
We had a committee of six individuals, different backgrounds, so that helped.
Yeah. Heather picked us, so that's all Heather's fault if it goes bad.
We did say that.
Now, we're excited about it, and the team's excited about it too, so we're glad that we're at this point, and we really strongly recommend we move forward with this, so we can get going to get this first negotiated at a fair and a good price. We'll bring it back on the 16th for y'all to review, look at. Of course, Mark looking over the agreement before, but bringing it to you. And then, we're gonna hit the ground running come January 1 and get this going. And hopefully, get this soon. And this includes everybody, so if the question's gonna be, does this include police? Yes. It does include police.
The only two positions it doesn't include is the pool lifeguards and pool staff.
Why not?
Because they're seasonal positions and they're, we're market no matter what if we want to obtain those.
And what's the timeline for the, I guess, initial report back?
Yeah, bring it back.
For the initial report back to council?
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking in terms of if we want to consider in the budget for next year.
Yes. Yeah, we're set up for it to line up with that.
Yes.
And we're, we also asked in our RFQ for a three-year implementation.
Yeah, I saw that, that's great.
Yeah, and truth be told, so one of the cities that we talked to that actually had this, they were on year three of the implementation. And so, they had to stack, moving forward, budget got tied from this year, just like any other city. So they had to skip this known year. So they did something else, and they're gonna be getting back on that third year as they move forward with cost of living. So they were doing cost of livings to keep up, but they had to stack these to get to where they needed to go. But they also do realize, hey, sometimes the world happens. But the city was good enough to say, look, but the promise is that we're gonna get this done. And so, they're already back on track to getting it done. And that's the same thing, not to get off track, but a three-year implementation to where we need to be where we need to be, so we're not being poached, so that we can go poach and we can keep people. And they can stay here. We can get the smartest, brightest, best, and keep them here. And so, I think this is gonna help us.
Let staff know what they're gonna get, they'll stay.
Dot it out. So it's not only recruitment, but retention too.
How many options are they returning to?
How many options? Job titles?
No, not job titles. When I've done these before, they'll bring back a low-cost, moderate-cost, high-cost scenario.
That wasn't laid out in their proposal, but I'll be sure and ask the question.
Yeah. Let's get this thing going.
I'll second.
All right, let's move to the second, and we'll begin with Councilmember Swain.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Krim, yes.
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Thank you.
All righty. It is 8:05, and we're going to adjourn into executive session with the city council. We'll adjourn from public hearing at any time, and we're choosing this time at 8:05. And it'd be executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, deliberation regarding the appointment and employment of city manager, including discussion qualifications, compensation, and terms of proposed employment.
I'll wait on here. I'll wait on here.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that the city council appoint Robert Eads as city manager for the city of Elgin, effective on a date to be specified in his employment agreement and authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute a city manager employment agreement with Mr. Eads on terms consistent with the council's direction.
A second. It's been moved in second and we'll begin with Mayor Pro Tem Brazier.
Brazier, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kaznatsky, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Swain, I'm sorry, yes.
Love, yes.
Swain.
Do I have to vote? Rodriguez, yes.
Krim, yes.
All right, motion carries and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you.
We will swear you in on our next council meeting.
Sweet.
Any other announcements?
Don't forget Saturday, we got votes.
The parade, the light parade is what she's talking about, so if you are going to be.
Twelve.
You're not, the mayor's got to go.
If y'all are going to be, hold on honey, let me get this out. If y'all are going to be in the parade, please meet council member Love, where?
I don't know.
What time?
I thought I was coming to pick you up, yeah, I have the truck.
Do we need to bring lights and help you decorate?
So we're going to be Rudolph and we got some lights, but if you got more lights, it'd be even better.
Do you have room for the rest of us to ride so we can be a nice jolly council?
When you say the rest of, it's, it's only two other.
Yes.
My name wasn't ever on anything.
I mean, we know you show up soon.
Arthur and, and, and Mayor Pro Tem, okay?
I think I'm going to watch on the sidelines this time.
Okay, Chuck, what's, what's your pleasure?
I'll be here.
Are you going to be in?
Chuck going to be with his peoples.
Okay, oh yeah, because with the brothers being in the, okay. All right, so anyway, y'all try five, it's a blue truck, right?
Yes.
It's the only blue truck.
Text us the number.
What time do we need to line up? Are we going to?
Before dark.
Well, y'all laughing over there.
You didn't get the email on how to sign and which way it's going, I'll forward mine to you.
You're emceeing, what time do we do this?
Oh, that's true.
I think you line up at three.
At three?
Yeah.
Oh, see, Ms. Sonia said if we would go to elgantexas.gov, it would tell us the times. Search for Holiday by the Tracks and it'll give us all the details.
It is, is it the most updated one? Because I got one today that was updated.
All the forms are updated.
Okay, with the directions. Anyway, you go there and I'll send you the email.
Okay.
Okay. Pam, go right ahead.
Christmas party, it's week on Friday.
That's right, that's right.
So don't forget, we are currently at two hundred people attending.
Blessing.
Okay.
All right. All right.
If you have an R S V P, please do so on Friday.
Arthur.
We're nowhere to find her.
Um, addressing our issue at Lydic, we are.
Wait, are we live?
Yeah. We are actually having a community meeting there on Tuesday, the ninth, at six thirty. If you'd like to attend, we are going to have it posted so that we'll be okay with form. Bo is bringing all kinds of information and stuff and architect and the whole bit because we want them to understand.
Where's it going to be?
Oh, I'm sorry, Shiloh Baptist Church is out there at Lydic, yeah, yeah. And I talked with Pastor Wilson and he's happy to let us come out there and.
And can send us an address so we can do G P S?
Yes, yes, I will do that. And so we will try, I was going to do it then, but hopefully, I don't think that was the best of times at that point. But we are going to do our due diligence, we've done our due diligence. But we're going to go a step further to go on their grounds and talk to them and that. Anyway, I'm going to leave it at that.
So next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. All right, anything else? It is eight twenty-seven and we are adjourned.